Let's call the meeting to order and rise to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, in the book with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. It's good to see everybody here. Nice fall evening. We will get right into our business here. First up, we have Steve Higginbotham with project updates.
All right, she had before you the project progression that you've seen before. A number of changes since your last meeting, starting right there at the top. The first project, the courthouse exterior, most of the stonework has been completed on that. They're working, there'll be a punch list created in a couple of weeks for that project to finish up. They are doing some, continuing to do some work on the, on the ground level where they can work. They've gotten rid of the, the, most of the lifts and the protecting screening. The annex generator project, we're awaiting the scheduling of a pre-construction meeting on that one. The courthouse bathrooms, we did create a punch list for that last week. And it'll be a couple of weeks before they return to take care of the items that we identified on the punch list. The circuit court judges' office security, that project is scheduled to start tomorrow. And most of that work will take place next week. The judge is on vacation next week so they can get most of that project finished before the end of the week. The First Bank Expo Hall HVAC project, they did dig the footers and I expected them to pour the foundations for those today. The actual inside work in the expo hall will start on November 16th. That is a, during a break of when we don't have anything scheduled for inside the expo hall. And then the next three items, the first one is the annex main service upgrade. Recall at your last meeting, you approved a not to exceed amount of $25,000. We do have a quote of $10,859 and the commissioners did approve that today. So that number is placed in that far right-hand column, so that's a firm number. And then we do have some firm numbers for the next two projects. The ejector pump panels and the sump pump panels, and those combined, you had approved an amount not to exceed $55,000 for both of those. And you can see the numbers to the far right-hand side of what those quotes have come in. The only two projects left that we don't have a firm quote on are the two roofs at the fairgrounds. But for the purposes of your consideration of the additional appropriation tonight of the $2 million, I plug those numbers into the far right so that you can see what that total looks like of a commitment for the projects that, that both commissioners and council have approved. That total is 1.945,329. And so in your one-time account balance as we speak today, as of yesterday, was 151,805. And so if you approve the $2 million tonight, you'll end up with a balance in there of $2,139,862. Taking what you, what we have committed to thus far, plus the 10% contingency build in there, it comes out to be about a little less than what we'll have in that account for the end of the year. So I would anticipate most of this to be paid out before the end of the year, but I would anticipate some of it would be either encumbered or re-appropriated after the first of the year.
Any questions? Do we have a timeline on the technology in this room?
No.
Good answer. Okay.
I'll tell you, he was in this morning and the sound system was working great. In fact, it was almost too good because you could, you could hear paper rattling, that kind of stuff.
We're still holding money on that project, so.
Yeah, I see that.
So we continue to work on that, but getting closer. Any other questions for Steve?
I have one quick one. So Steve, I had some employees ask me, and I don't know about this, on the restrooms on the second floor, so is there a public restroom and then is there one for the female staff? Is there, is there for men? There's a public and a men's or what?
On the, on the second floor, there's just a women's bathroom.
So there's not a men's at all on the second floor?
Now, that was eliminated a number of years ago.
Okay.
So there's, there's two bathrooms on the third floor, one bathroom on the second floor, two bathrooms on the first floor.
So is there a, is there one for just male employees?
On the second floor.
Anywhere?
Yes.
And then is there one for female employees anywhere?
Yes. Employees?
Yes.
No.
For neither one?
No.
Okay. I was questioned about that and I didn't have the answer, so.
Well.
Thank you.
When we went to handicap accessible, you can't keep those doors locked any longer. You have to have a push button so they open them.
Gotcha. Very familiar. Thank you.
Steve? The appropriation tonight is for $3 million.
Oh, no, two million, I'm sorry.
It's for $2 million.
Yep.
Of that $2 million, you're going to use 190. What are you using?
I would anticipate us using that figure to the bottom right.
$2 million. Okay. And the balance in that account when you checked in my office was what?
As of yesterday, it was 151,805.
You're going to get a request from Congresswoman, Congresswoman, Councilwoman, I'm close. Councilman Williams to transfer $362,000. You add those, what he's going to get, the $2 million won't cover it.
I believe.
Have you heard a request?
Well.
If my math's right.
But I think this was out of our project, one-time project.
Correct.
Correct.
And the other one can come from council contingency. They're two different things.
Okay.
I'm not sure what's in that.
And I don't know what the balance in council.
And I don't know what that balance is currently.
I wish I did. Okay. Can you, can Debbie look that up on her computer?
I'm not connected.
But can you look it up and tell us what it is?
Can she? No, she can't.
To the internet?
Not here, no. No, when I was doing that, it was through a thumb drive.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
I can't answer that.
Okay. Any more questions for Steve? If not, we'll go to the commissioners.
Thank you. A couple of things. Number one, Monday night, the city of Richmond approved the strategic investment plan for the help program. So all eight of the entities now that are a part of the help process have agreed to, to the strategic investment plan. So we're ready to start with the next steps. Along those lines, I have the report for you on ARPA funds. So if you look at the one that has the color on it, green and yellow, that tells you the overall ARPA funds. We received $12,797,195. We appropriated for this year $2,097,389. We have help project commitments now that we've approved the plan of $5,893,253. Total committed is $7,99642, which leaves uncommitted ARPA funds at this point of $4,806,553. If you go to the right-hand column, the, the green column is what we have in lost revenue. Remember that we took $10 million in lost revenue. The yellow is what's available in the restricted use money, which started out at $2,797,195. If you go down to line eight in those columns, $3,965,233 is uncommitted for ARPA in the lost revenue funds. And in the restricted funds, $841,320. So down at the bottom from lines 17 through 26 tells you what we have committed those dollars for. Again, the same with the color yellow is restricted, green is, is the lost revenue. That tells you in those columns what was committed, what was appropriated, what has, what we have spent to date, and the appropriation balance. So we're, we're in good shape. We did transfer $58,240 from line 25 into line 26 to pay for those sheriff's vehicles last, last meeting. So we're in good shape there. If you have any questions on that page, let me know. If not, move on to the next sheet. It's printed front and back. On one side, it has the help project commitments. These are all committed from, at least at this point, the lost revenue account. And they have lists each project and how much of the county's ARPA dollars have been committed. So all of these projects have ARPA commitments. There are a few others that have other sources of funding committed from the county, but these are all ARPA money. So the total commitment, $5,893,253 for the help program. And on the back is just a list of what we've talked before as what we might anticipate spending some of the uncommitted dollars on. And that list has, has kind of evolved over the last three or four months. We had a meeting and a discussion about that the last time we met. So my, my expectation would be as next week we have a meeting of the elected officials and department heads. And all of you are invited to join us for that at 9:30 next Wednesday. And this will be one of the points of discussion is we have roughly $6 million that's still uncommitted. And what are the needs of your department that might, that might be eligible for expenditure with ARPA funds? And then obviously the council and commissioners are making those decisions as well. Any questions on any of that?
On this front, it's, it's only Wayne County.
Correct.
If that's included.
This is just Wayne County's ARPA funds, just Wayne County's ARPA funds. The, the larger spreadsheet that we passed out when we actually agreed to SIP included everything, but this did not.
Nothing has been eliminated.
Nothing has been eliminated. Everything was approved and the final approval was Monday night with the city of Richmond. And this is just something that we've talked a couple of times on the seal for the county. And I've mentioned to you and I think showed you a picture at one point about the seal of, on the north side of the courthouse. And so I, I asked Sue King, who's the historian at Morris Meigs Library, to see what she could find out about that seal. And she found this and shared it with me. It's from the Hagerstown Exponent, February 3rd, 1882. And it, it tells us that the commissioners agreed to contract for $100 with AG Campfield to carve that what's referred to as the county seal into the north side of the courthouse there. So just a, a little tidbit of information that I thought was interesting. I know until recently, when we started the project to clean up the, the stonework, I don't ever recall having noticed that seal. Obviously, it's been there for well over 100 years, but I don't recall ever noticing it before. Anyway, if you're out that way, take a look. We have a lot of other projects in the works as you might expect, but nothing that rises to the level of you all finalizing your budget tonight. So if you have any questions over any of this, I want to try my best to keep you up to date on what we've committed as a county in the ARPA funds and what we still have available. There is, there's the possibility still of doing some things yet this year. And you'll see later on a request for a transfer to do some of the help projects. But we also have had a request from, from Mike Sharp to see if we are interested in proceeding with the change or the removal of the fuel tanks and replacement. And so that's, that's still on the list of possible expenditures. So at some point, we need to start scaling down some of those. And that's one that Mr. Sharp feels strongly needs to do. The tanks are, I believe he said 32 or 33 years old and they have a life expectancy of about 30 years. So we're, we're getting to, we need to do some things. If you have any questions.
Has that gone out yet?
He has an estimate, but it hasn't actually gone out to bid. It is probably a $500,000 project, so it will have to go out to bid before we can report it. Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, next up, Mark Holsher, do you have something you want to talk about the billing from Dunn and Associates?
I do if. I had talked to you earlier about this issue. Dunn gets $335,000 a month from Wayne County to put in a fund that they hold at their business down there. Current balance in that fund that they're holding is about $3.005. I would like to have that money held by Wayne County instead of Dunn. The reason being that that is Wayne County taxpayer dollars and should be under the authority of Wayne County elected officials since it is taxpayer dollars. Years ago, it was held in Wayne County in the treasury and for whatever reason was moved or, I don't know what happened with it. The, the change in moving that money to Wayne County treasury has no effect on Dunn. It does not affect their procedures. It doesn't affect how they spend money. It allows only for us to hold the money. If we held the money, we would have an income. Currently, there is no interest paid to Wayne County on that money.
There is.
Actually, there is.
There is.
It goes back into the account. It goes back.
It stays with Dunn.
I understand that.
But we own that money.
Yes, but there is no money paid to Wayne County as interest. It is held by Dunn in their, in that fund. They have the $3.005.
Correct.
So the rate of payment on that is, is about 1.5%. And I know this council is looking for money. I've sat here and watched you go through the budgets and making adjustments in an effort to get as much money as you could. If we bring it up here and we invest it, having checked with the county treasurer, we're going to make about $125,000 off of that money, which is more than Dunn is making. That would go back into that fund, the $3.005.
There, one, I mean, one thing is they, they need that money at their disposal to pay claims on a timely basis.
Right.
So that's.
I've already thought about that. And what we'll, what can do, and that was going to be questioned. It doesn't change what Dunn has to do. It doesn't change how the money is collected in Dunn. What it changes is it gives Wayne County authority to hold that money, as I believe it should since it's taxpayer dollars. And I think it should be under county employees. If Dunn needs money and they, however they would notify me, we will write them a check the day we get a notification to them. It, it's, it's no change to their business. It is merely a change that I think is appropriate and makes business sense to have that money held here. I believe it, it's county taxpayer money and should be overseen by county employees. Now, I've checked with Mr. Cross and if he had, he can make a statement himself.
He has a statement.
There is no requirement that Dunn hold this money. It is just something they do. It doesn't change anything for Dunn. It doesn't change any procedure they might have. Now, the question is, well, what if they have run out of money? Okay, they eat up that $3.005 on claims and so on. It doesn't change how we, we pay, how we do things. If they run out of money down there, we still have the same problem coming up with what it is. If we're holding the money up here, we still have a problem with coming up with the money, same problems. So that there is just no change to what will happen and the procedure with Dunn. It is merely my, and I've talked to the county treasurer. It's my thinking as a former businessman that this money belongs to taxpayers. It ought to be held by us and we ought to get a better interest rate than what we're, what currently going into that fund.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Plaster because they make the contract with Dunn and he can tell you some specifics.
We do have, there are reasons why they hold the money. So they are constantly negotiating with, on every claim. And there are discounts to be had by paying immediately. And so they need some money available to make sure that happens. With all due respect to the auditor's office, I think it's entirely possible that, that it would take longer to get the money to them when they have to be, than, than he anticipates. And we could miss out on those discounts for prompt payment of claims. I don't know where he got his numbers on the investment percentages, but I believe those to be wrong. Kim, do you have any of the updated numbers on, on returns on those investments? Because they are invested and, and that money goes back into the fund so that we're getting that benefit.
So every month, there is a report. We actually receive the actual bank statement for the CDs. What's invested, it's two and a half pages long, what the return rate is. It goes anywhere from over 1% over 5%. It varies. So as of right now, everything we have is 3.92% average return rate. We have $79,000 to date and we have $4.1 million total down at Dunn. But we do get all those reports and the cash reports every Wednesday. So again, those rates by varying, as we would all know, depends on the length, depends on when it was invested, et cetera. Kathy's on top of it all the time. That interest is still taxpayers' dollars. It gets, it stays in the trust account down at Dunn.
So I, I would just add to that that I absolutely will, will take a deeper dive into this. And it may be that, that some of that money could be brought back to the county. I know that, that, that the treasurer is, is able to invest. Obviously, if we've got $20 million in, in investment, we may have a better rate than with $3 million. And, and we can have access to the money fairly readily. So we'll take a look at that. We'll work with Mark. We'll work with Dunn. See if the commissioners can't put a little more flesh on the bones of this idea. The other thing that, that certainly could be and should be considered is the money that is committed in the budget every year. So we pay $300, I'd say $50,000 as a round number per month to Dunn, again, to settle claims for us. And that is augmented by the employees' contributions to the, to the health insurance fund as well. And that goes to Dunn as well. But you know, if, if we're healthy in the account at Dunn, we don't have to send additional money every month. And that is actually in your budget. It's in the council budget. And so you could make a decision every month if you chose to whether or not there needs to be a payment made to Dunn based on the balance for that month. Remember that we need to 100% fund our, our employee health insurance program. We are self-funded, so we need to make sure that we have 100% funded, which is roughly $6.5 million total. There's about $4 million that, that comes from, from your budget line item every year, give or take, as, as things fluctuate. There's about $800,000 to $900,000 that comes from employee contributions as well as some additional funds besides the general fund that pays for the, the health insurance premiums for their employees. And so that leaves a gap of a million to a million and a half dollars a year. So that would need to be money that was, that was certainly set aside as part of the health insurance program as well. But that's, that's where we're at. We'll, we'll look at it in more detail. I would encourage at least one of you to be involved in those conversations as well. Tony has a question.
Is it a possibility that the reason why the balance is up there? You're sending $300,000 a month.
$335,000.
We've had a very good experience rate because there have been times that it's been.
Oh, it's been below $1 million after, as recently as three or four years.
Could the commissioners talk about what a prudent amount that they have and just send that, send that amount each month to, you know?
So what is the balance that's trying to be maintained?
My experience, just as I've been on council, one year, we gave up money two different times, I think, just to get through the year. And now here we are with a big balance. So we could have a bad year next year and this could be gone.
That is, that has no effect.
I, I know what you're talking about.
On what I would like to do with that money.
And, and also in the past, we like, we could suspend those payments for the rest of this year if we wanted to just have an extra $1000. Well, for the next, you know, October, November, December, we could, we could not pay those payments and still be fine in our fund if we need that extra money in our general fund.
But I think it needs to be a threshold that they need to have.
It's between $2.5 and $3 million is what we've planned for.
Next month, if, if we only need to send 200, then your claim would just be for 200 and the rest would stay here.
We can do that. Historically, we have, the, the claim has been just for 1/12 of the line item, but it doesn't have to be.
Right. Okay.
So we, we will look at that. We'll report back to you next month.
So in that look, you'll better describe how we determine the balance that we need to have there?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Could I add and inject one thing here, having been the treasurer before? So, so I know money moves electronically. So it really doesn't matter if it's at Columbus, Indiana or Richmond, Indiana, as far as that goes. The only, the only point to it really, to Mark's point, is could we get a better rate here? So if we go to the treasurer and say, can you get better than 3.92 or whatever, then there would be a point to moving it. Otherwise, not going.
Otherwise, not going.
Yeah.
Correct. I would disagree that there isn't. That's county money, county taxpayer money?
Partially.
And, no, this is, this part is all county money, county taxpayer money.
No, it's also...
It's also the contribution from the employees.
Party contributions.
Not in that...
Part of it is.
Okay. I'm not going to argue that point here.
Thank you.
But that money is whatever portion is paid by taxpayers in Wayne County. And I believe that that should be under the control of the county auditor and county treasurer as elected officials and not under the control of Dunn. That's a...
And I think you've made your opinion very clear.
Okay.
We understand.
The second issue that you raised was you said that there'd be a delay of payment being made to them if they needed money. There's not going to be, if they want money today, they're going to get money today. Our office is, will handle that. That is not an issue and they will get money. Guarantee it.
Well, the commissioners are going to take it under advisement and talk about the amount of money that we feel like has to be there. And then we'll discuss it next month, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Will that include the county auditor?
Will what include the county auditor?
Your discussions.
Absolutely.
You come to the commission.
I'm just checking.
If you're at the meeting, you can discuss it with us. We want your input.
Okay. Moving on, we have court services here and welcome Judge Todd.
Thank you. Okay, if I sit down?
Sure.
Absolutely.
I may be too old to stand at this point in the evening very long. I've tried to make some notes, so bear with me. So I want to be fairly structured with my comments and not to hopefully ramble too much and take an inordinate amount of time. But there are a few things I want to say. Primarily what I'm here to speak on is the portion of our budget that we addressed with specifically our current court employees and raises that we requested for them. And again, I know you've dealt with a request we also made for an additional employee. And as I understand it, again, it's not an approved budget, but one that's approved for them. I saw that is not anywhere close to what we had asked for. And so for the last, probably at least a couple of years, if not more, we've tried to lobby fairly hard to get those specific three positions increased. What I have observed, and I've been on the bench not quite 15 years, but I'm going on my, I'm into my 15th year, more and more is placed on them. Not only with stress and, there's a lot of county employees that deal with the public, but our employees deal with the public what I would consider to be from top to bottom. And by that, I mean they have a lot of interactions with attorneys, attorney staffs, everywhere from that to folks who are illiterate that they're assisting in the hallway. So it's the full spectrum and respectfully, not all employees in all county positions do with that. A lot of folks at the counter obviously deal with different positions. The other thing too, that I think our employees incur that a vast majority don't, I know there are some exceptions, is extra work that's placed on them and specific times without really warning or input or control. And I'll give you an example. If I have a hearing that runs into the noon hour, I don't turn to Rhonda and say, Rhonda, are we okay going through the noon hour? I will ask Rhonda or if Sher is subbing in or if Liz is subbing in, hey, do you have something planned during the noon hour? And they say, yes. And I'll say, well, we'll take a brief recess. You can make an adjustment. You can cancel that and we'll continue on through the hearing. And we do that pretty frequently. And that includes in the evening as well. So whether it's a lunch with a parent, kid, or the same thing in the evening, they cancel and make those adjustments. I've even had jury trial situations where, again, employees have adjusted what they had as planned days off because the jury trial goes. Maybe it wasn't going to go and we try to plan our vacations and we hate to change some of that. So respectfully, I don't know that that's that common. And when we have jury trials also, it's, again, when are we going to get home this evening? I couldn't tell you. Here's my best guess. And when jurors deliberate, that can be into any time in the evening. So I respectfully would offer that they work a more surprise schedule than most, if not all county employees work. And I've been trying to think. I know there are, for example, street folks that are out there. You know, you have bad weather, they get called into work. So I'm not saying they're exclusive on that, but it's a pretty limited crew. And not only that, but with work crews, those are generally limited. For example, maybe to the winter months or an ideal that a storm's coming, they have some kind of heads up. Our folks generally don't have any heads up because sometimes an 11 o'clock hearing will go seven minutes and sometimes it'll go an hour and a half. It's unpredictable, especially when you're dealing with pro se parties. The other thing I would note over the years, especially the last four or five years, when probably I think I've lobbied harder, is there's a whole skill set that continues to be added to those jobs. And I offered this to you all very respectfully. I understand you're not involved in our courtrooms all the time, just like I'm not involved in your business. I can't fully appreciate, and I'm just giving this as an example, what's going on outside and around the courthouse. And I never try to compare apples to oranges. I don't say, well, we're spending all this money on the courthouse. How come you can't give my employees a little more money? Those are two separate things to me. I trust that you folks are the caregivers of county property and you're spending funds you feel are necessary to keep that building intact. And I challenge anybody really to question me about in 15 years have I come over here and tried to drag one or intermix the other? So that's not my responsibility and I don't know much about it. I assume Steve does because he's helping oversee that project. I may have a question about it. Most of my questions, Steve probably deal with, hey, are they going to be working outside? I got a jury trial next week and let you do that business. But in terms of inside my lines, it's a greater computer skill than ever existed before. They become, in my humble opinion, borderline kind of IT people because the skill set you need now to navigate around computers with various apps and the things that we get things on or receive things and all the e-filing. And then you have the, obviously, the addition of Odyssey back in 2018 and the transition to that. And I would respectfully offer, there are several people that are using Odyssey, including the clerk's office. But my folks are kind of the last resort of making sure to get those things inputted properly and handle Odyssey correct, especially with distribution and notices and a lot of things. There is a ton to Odyssey. I pretty much used to know the other system pretty good. I could get on there. I always prided myself in knowing most things I was asking my employees to do. I can no longer do that relevant to Odyssey. It's gone beyond my complexity of the things I need to do. I work it pretty good on my side, but not so much on their side. And then when COVID hit, I'm just using these as examples, we're probably about the only ballgame in town that didn't shut down. I was still having hearings, as you know, and I was in the courthouse. My employees were in the courthouse relative to COVID matters. And again, that's not the case with everyone across the board. I'd also add in with recording equipment, the advances that we're dealing with there in terms of recording equipment. And many of you, again, may not be aware of this, that also when there's transcripts or any things that come out of now recorded proceedings, those are all handled in an electronic format with the Court of Appeals. So court reporters, especially, not all three of those employees, but court reporters, have to know how to deal with those. It's a whole different, and with all due respect, the Court of Appeals Supreme Court, they have pretty stringent rules about how that electronic filing has to be done. Again, that's an arena that at one point I was involved with, a clerk for the Court of Appeals. I couldn't pretend to step into that without reeducating myself. So some of those things, I rely on them. The other thing I would note that when we asked for an additional employee, part of that was with the workload that we've been under is trying to continue to delegate some tasks that you can. So it wasn't just about spreading some work. It wasn't about just necessarily reducing work. It was to some degree to them, but it was trying to find different skill sets so I could maximize some of the skill set that they have dealing with legal documents, screening documents. And that, again, takes an exponential skill level that respectfully is just not, they're just not clerical workers. And that's nothing against any clerical worker. I'm just telling you, it's a skill set. And the other thing I guess I would challenge you to do, and again, and maybe it doesn't make a difference beyond tonight, but I wouldn't put him on the spot if he was still here. I wouldn't want him to speak to it. But I'd say, talk to Ron Cross privately. And again, this is not any knock on any county that's surrounding us or other counties our size. But if you talk to attorneys about what's it like to call a Wayne County court reporter or a bailiff or a scheduling person? We're one of the courts also, and there's more of a dying breed, but attorneys appreciate it and parties appreciate it. And that is trying to have some scheduling coordination. So there's not a constant continuous with the number of hearings we have. So again, that takes some work to the Odyssey calendaring system. And so we clear those hearings. So if you talk to attorneys, I don't really care who. You pick your own that you know in this county and say, hey, what's it like to dealing in Wayne County with the court employees directly there versus X county? And I don't care what county you pick either. I feel that confident in the interactions those folks have with ours. So I'd also point out in larger, some larger jurisdictions, and keep in mind those were, those folks are receiving more money. Many times those courts, because of their size or those counties, sometimes have a more limited or defined docket than we do. And what I mean by that, you may have, for example, a court in Marion County or Hamilton County and they're doing criminal trials of this nature, only felony criminal trials of this, that's all they do. You have, I think, still now, two or three judges in Marion County. All they do is protective orders. So it's easier to learn that niche than the approximately 50 cause numbers that exist that we deal with. And there's very few that the court services budget, meaning one, two, and circuit, don't deal with. And those are the ones Judge Dolehany deals with. So there's about 50 different cause numbers. And again, I'm not going to bore you with running through them. So the scope, again, of your skill set, I think, has to be broader. Now, having said that, I'd be the first to acknowledge that I probably have done a poor job in not being maybe more strategic or I hate to use the word political because it seems to have any more nasty connotation. It shouldn't, but it does, about asking for these things. I guess maybe if I was more savvy, I would go about the constant revision of the job classifications to make sure they include all these skill sets and we're constantly scoping because maybe apparently that's what turns Irwin on. I'll try not to get too negative, but I'm not a big Irwin and Associate fan in terms of, it seems like the delegation of what we should do on these decisions regarding raises relies on. But having said that, I'm not very good at that. And I've got my head down running and I don't work to revise those. And there's probably various things those employees are doing that probably still, even though we revised those not too long ago, that are probably not reflective of that. So the other thing I would note too, and I've noted this two or three times. So you might say, eh, you've told us that before. But maybe there's people in the room I haven't said. And that is, those that have worked with me for 15 years know that I'm not over here whining about money a bunch. I just don't. Now, when we got carpet, I can't remember if it's Jeff or who came over and said, hey, part of the reason we're asking, look in the courtroom. We've had people trip a couple of times and very seldom, like I said, look, I just want to go on the record that I'm asking it replaced because if something happens, I don't want it to be reflected on me. And you come over, looked at it, said, crap, it's been in there. What did we find out 30 some years? So really, until that came up, I wasn't over here about wanting the best and the brightest of stuff. And again, I point out, I use Judge Renkey's desk. Judge Renkey's been gone for 20 some years. Judge Horn's been on the bench. I use old bookshelves that came out of Circuit Court. I don't know how old they are. I'm not a person over here constantly demanding of those personal things, but I am over here lobbying pretty hard for these raises that we've requested. When I look at what that role is, and again, I would be less than candid, although I kind of threw in a knock at Irwin and Associate. I can't fully appreciate what they do for you and the input they've got. My experience has not been good with them, including the one I shared with you regarding they're supposing to have reached out to me to get my input on an email that got diverted, never followed up with me and just said Judge Todd didn't respond. Anybody that deals with my obsessive compulsive disorder nature and Rhonda, my hat's off to you every day for doing that, knows that I don't ignore stuff. If I get an email from somebody or you call me, I call you back or say, come over. I'll talk to you. And so my experience there has not been good. So when I look at what you're proposing to pass for my folks versus what we've asked for, it's about $21,000 a year is what that money difference is. So I guess when I look at that, one of the things that I've not taken the time to do, and I don't know, maybe there's merit in it, is, you know, over the course of, for those of you who've been here, over the course of the last five to seven years, when you've given out county raises kind of across the board, have there been positions that have either been reclassified with the same people in there or not reclassified, who have received something other than those county raises? My guess is there has been. And so you're shaking your head no. Well, was that Beth? You shaking no?
Yeah, I don't think we have. I mean, we just go by, we go to the midpoint in each classification.
So you're representing over the last, let's say, five to seven years, there's not been a job that's been reclassified?
No, there has been some reclassified. And that's a question I had for you. Go ahead.
And so when I look at those things, you know, maybe I should go back and be better at that in terms of, is there something other than across the board raises? And again, if so, part of that's on me for maybe not being more strategic in saying, look, if that's what they want to see, then I can do that. And so I'm looking at, quite frankly, a skill set and how that skill set has had to have grown and continues to grow. And I think what we've asked for our people is fair. I appreciate the decision by counsel to give us an additional person. I greatly appreciate that. And I guess I'd end on this, and this may not be received well, and I understand that. I sure don't have the most wisdom in the world. I'd like to think I've gathered some at this point in my life, but I value transparency over wisdom. And maybe that's not wise, but I do it. And so here's the situation. I've got an opportunity for another person. The county's probably going to do well with me because if the raises my folks get are those that have been projected in the salary ordinance, I don't know that I intend to hire another person. You might say, well, that kind of shoots you in the foot. You could spread the work over four people and three and you might be right with that. So I guess not doing anything. You had a home run potentially with me. I can't speak for the other judges. What I can speak to the other judges about, because I've talked to, and Judge Horn's here, obviously, and Judge Drake I spoke to before coming here, is they all feel just as strongly about these folks getting the raises as I do. And I guess I would end on this. I know it takes a certain amount of, courage may be too strong a word, but a certain amount of knowing you're going to take some head if, why are court employees treated differently? I genuinely tried to give you some reasons of why my people should be treated differently on more money. So I know every dollar counts and for the reasons I've already stated, I try to be fiscally conservative for the most part. Don't lobby a whole lot for stuff or wanting fancy stuff. But I am lobbying hardest for, quite frankly, the most valuable assets I've had for 15 years. And that's the three folks that are busting about every day to work for me. So that's really it. And I appreciate the time, appreciate the indulgence you've given me with the time. But if you have questions, I'll sure answer them or do my best.
And the first thing that came to my mind, and you mentioned it, is have people updated those descriptions and have those reevaluated to make sure that everything's getting included in what they do. Because that could make a difference.
No, no, again, and part of that's me head down running. And I'll acknowledge that. You know, it's trying, it's struggling to keep up with the stuff between the lines. And that includes after hours, you know. And again, I don't want to get into, I could just go on about how Chuck Dodd's a hard worker and I've done that a little bit before.
We know that.
But, I mean, it's busting your hump all the time and sometimes that's not the highest fire in the stack. And that's what really concerns me. And it's somewhat disheartening that if that's the part that needed to be done, then I've let my employees down trying to run hard and do the stuff that's between the lines, making decisions and ruling on stuff that's just struggling under advisement. I just had a case I ruled on. It's the longest thing in 15 years I've had under advisement. Took me almost five months to rule on it. It was a contested matter, about a 12 or 13 page single line order. And those are things that are hard to do. You're doing them after hours. So that's on me if I'm making those decisions that unfortunately...
Maybe we have HR to help you.
My employees pay for, pardon me?
You can always count on HR to help you. That's what they're here for.
Because I have, I have seen, actually just today, knowing you were coming, wanted to double check on everything. And I do have a few questions, not here in this forum. I have a few questions for you to ask in regards to a couple of positions that are in the same classification. So I'm more than happy to help you with that and...
I don't have any problem with doing it and addressing it. But again, as I understand the timeline for decision, and didn't understand that you're going to be voting on a budget this evening. So what difference that makes, I don't know. So, but I'd be glad to. I'm always open to, everybody knows by now, I have no problem discussing it with you.
Salary ordinance amendments, everything can be amended.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I would say that even though we're finalizing a budget now, we always can make amendments to the salary ordinance. We always could change things if we felt led to do that at any given time. The only salaries we can't change during a year are those of elected officials. Otherwise, if we need or want to, we can. It was brought to my attention this evening that Kim, the HR department, has identified that there was a possible error in the 23 salary ordinance for your employees that could have impacted what we're talking about. They have not been able to get a final determination by any means on that. And so that could impact what the 24 salary should be. And so they'll need some time to do that. I would highly recommend that the job descriptions be reviewed and updated if necessary. And that could address, without an issue of other employees thinking, and that could address, without an issue of other employees thinking, "Well, the court's got this, why can't I?" If the classification changes, then we're all on good ground to consider that. But I would think that tonight it would be appropriate to take this under advisement until HR can determine what the error was and what needs to be done in reflection of that for the 23 ordinance. We can discuss this request and with full knowledge from that and the impact of that, and make changes as we feel we should do at any given time.
Yeah, and I have no problem doing any of that, Max, I'm good with that. But, I mean, part of it is, and I'll have to think of the wording to describe it, but again, I don't want to give anybody the impression that Rhonda drafts orders and I just put my name to them, that's absolutely not what happens. But I'm telling you, Rhonda and Sharon Liz all have a skill set that's been developed to help me survive, that they definitely draft orders and then they green, they green the Judge Todd junk, and they know that it requires more, a different legal analysis, a different thing, and just your, you know, that takes a skill set, it just does, and they're experienced at what they do. I mean, I'm blessed, naturally, I'm in the camera telling you, it's the best step ever, probably. Judge Warren, Judge Drake feel the best, but feel the same way, but I've been blessed in that regard, you know, and if not, probably wouldn't have survived the last few years, because it's, the load has just increased. And the things you have to do in each case, it's crazy, but you guys see it, too. I mean, look at the things you have to, sometimes the hoops that you're made to jump through now that, sometimes you shake your head and say, "You've got to be kidding me, now we've got to go these three extra steps to do the same thing." So it's not just, I know it's not just us, but that skill set they have's increased. So I'll work with HR and I'll work with whoever to get that recognized, and how to describe it will be the struggle for me, but I'll.
Well, the girls can help.
Yeah, I'm pretty good, I'm pretty good with wordsmith, I can work on that, so.
And I don't think anybody questions the skill sets of your people.
Yes. Well, and part of that, Max, is too, and I think Judge Drake shared this, and I don't want to go into too much of the detail because it reflects on particular individuals, may not necessarily that flushed out, but it's a matter of a public record that, you know, losing employees relative to pay increases, and I don't blame law firms necessarily. If I had a person, yeah, Rhonda, don't leave me, but if I had a person that, you know, that has that skill set as a law firm, that's what I'm looking for. And if I can pay them X amount more, you just, you lose them and you don't want to turn them. And again, you say, "Well, that's not really my issue, but it's mine, I've got to deal with training those people, and it takes a while to get them where they're at, especially now. Electronically, things come at you pretty quick."
And we have many other departments that have the same issue.
Yeah, I know.
That they're losing people, they want more money to keep them, we don't, and ended up. The sad thing is, if we give them more money, there's no guarantee that we keep them, but maybe we can hire better ones back. So I think due diligence on reviewing the job descriptions, addressing changes that need to be made there, and doing that in not a fast manner, but appropriate timeline, and then we can take action at any given time and address that.
Well, and the other thing, I guess, one thing I forgot to mention, I was talking about some things that I think respectfully separate us, not that, again, I'm not saying there aren't great county employees across the board, is, again, there's certain departments, I'm not here to mention that have that, those periods are like, "Holy crap, they're going to get really hit during this period, this particular segment or period." We seem to be gaslighted, for the most part, all the way, and the pretty much exception to that is around the end of December. If you have to have trials and you're a week from Christmas, you are ticking some people off. So I just learned the hard way, you don't have trials about December 12th and after, because people don't respond well to that. But other than that, you always have the potential, about eleven and a half months of the year, to just have it coming at you in droves, there really is no downtime a whole lot. When I take some time off, it's somewhat downtime, but not, your printers run constantly when I'm gone, too, with this. That's how it is. All right, you've given me enough time, I'll do whatever you want me to do if you'll consider giving my folks the money I've asked for, that's really what I want.
I think we've got a process that we need to go through to get to that point.
Yeah, I'm just asking you to get a strong consideration. It's the thing that I've lobbied the hardest for the last two or three years, and it's not just throwing a figure or a number out. I try to look at those realistically, I don't fill a match and say, "Well, let's ask for this, because maybe then they'll come back with this." I'm not negotiating for a car deal here, I'm trying to genuinely ask you what I think my people deserve at this time. And when I say my people, I'm talking about the courts collectively, the three of us.
Don't you just say no, logically.
And I'm not trying to imply that you did that, for sure. All right, that's, again, I'll continue to think questions, but I don't want to take any more of your time relative to my parts of the comments, but I'll answer any questions you may have, or try to.
The only question I have, you said about the new employee, so are you not going to look for a new employee?
I'm not speaking for the other courts. What I said in transparency, which, again, may be not be wisdom to say, is I don't know what I'll do. If people, my people continue to be paid in the, at the basic range that they are, the amounts they are now with a minimal raise, then I'll have to consider whether or not I want to hire another one, basically along those same lines. Yeah, that's what I said, so.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you both. You got any questions? Again, open door, email me, call me, I'll come over and talk to you. Or we'll talk to you one-on-one if you want. Thanks for giving me your time, and I hope it's not rude if I duck down.
It's not rude, you guys can leave. All right, moving on to our action items. We have an additional appropriation to take care of, so at this time I will open a public hearing. And we advertised to appropriate up to $2 million, which is what we need to do, is the $2 million from County General to Council's one-time expenditures, number 33952. Is there any discussion about that? We've talked about it for quite a while. Does anybody have any questions? Any public? Oh, there is none. So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A vote, second.
Motion by Gary, second by Barry, all in favor? So I will just need a motion to make that transfer from County General to the 33952.
Is this a transfer, or is this an appropriate?
It's an, I said it's an additional appropriation, that's why we had, but now we're going to take the money from County General and put it into.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we just had a public hearing. It did say transfer, but it, yeah.
Thank you.
She advertised it as an additional appropriation. So we have a motion and a second to transfer the money for the appropriation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, and we have the paperwork for that. So next, this is what Jeff was talking about earlier, we need to create the line item, two line items for East Germantown, the sewer and the sidewalk, you can see it on your agenda there. So I will need a motion to create those line items.
I'll make the motion, we create those two line items, 30510 East Germantown Sewer and 30520 East Germantown Sidewalk, under the ARPA Fund 8952.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. So now we need to transfer from the ARPA Fund 8952 into, oh, the line item that's number 44500 in that fund, $31,000 to these two lines, $21,000 to 30510 and $10,000 to 30520. Do I have a motion?
Over.
Motion by Tony, second by Gary, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, motion passes. Now, the next transfer we need to make is from Soil and Water, line 33800, miscellaneous operation expenses, $1,200 into their line item 22210, that's gas, fuel, and lubricants.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Now, I don't worry about this right here. Do you approve the restricted opioid funds, can you explain that to us?
Yes, the youth director, we've had a request from Drug Free Wayne County. They want to hire, or they want to refill a position for a youth director. They're going from a grant-funded position, and they'd like to use opioid settlement funds. This $3,900 would get them through the end of this year with that position. They're also requesting, is it $15,000?
$15,600.
$15,600 for next, next year out of opioid settlement. And that request has been advertised and will come to you, I believe, at your council meeting in November
Okay.
to fund next year going forward, but this is for the balance of this year.
So this is in addition to funds that they got when you made the first?
They were not receiving it.
They did not receive funds in that first round.
How much do you have left in your opioid settlement funds? Do you know?
There is.
Just would take it down to $84,000. Our first distribution in 2023 was for $88,000, that was the manufacturer's settlement amount. We have been told we'll receive an additional $326,000 during fourth quarter this year, but to date, we received $88,000, and this appropriation would take it down to about $84,000. But we're waiting to really call for proposals until we receive the larger amount, rather than doing it piecemeal, but this was an emergency situation, so.
And so is this for the director of Drug Free Wayne County? They have, what does the youth director?
It's a youth coordinator that, that works, reports to the executive director of Drug Free Wayne County. It was funded by a grant that's going away, and the Board of Directors of Drug Free Wayne County thought that, you know, they really wanted to keep this position, they just got momentum going. If they lost it, they would lose all the momentum. It's usually a younger person that works with high school students. They've built up a pretty good program of Richmond High School, Northeastern High School, and Lincoln in Cambridge City, and they want to continue to grow that, and their goal is fund it at least for three more years, and then let the schools take it over at that point, is what the whole goal is. And that's why they, they came to me and asked me if there's any way that we could find funds to fund it, and I said it was a perfect opportunity for opioid money to fund it. We originally funded it through the end of the year, but they're like, "We can't just hire somebody that doesn't know they're not going to have a job next year." So they come back and say, "Can we appropriate for next year, too?"
So that's why I had additional progress on going to the next year.
At the next, okay.
You know, for the number of years that I was involved as the director of Partnership for Drug Free Wayne County, one of the areas that we struggled in was engagement of youth. But what is the emphasis behind the work that Partnership does with the fees that are collected through the courts, is its deterrence, its education. And if this person is working in that area where we struggled for years, I think it's money well-used out of the opioid settlements. So I'll make the motion to approve the $3,900 restricted settlement funds for that youth director's salary.
Second.
Motion by Barry, second by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. And now we already know about what's going to happen in November, so that's a good thing for us. Okay, we are ready for the salary ordinance.
Jeff, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Do you want these things that I have before you get into the salary ordinance and the budget, or after all that?
We can, and I also have a grant. Yes, I've got that. I also have a grant we need to talk about real quick. Do you want to tell us about the grant? Okay, real quick, just as an easy one.
So the EMA has a grant that they get basically every year. It's a reimbursable grant, and it helps pay for the salaries of the staff for emergency management. So it's a reimbursement of just over $44,000, $44,827.63 that would just replenish our funds after having paid the EMA staff for most of the year already. So we, it's, again, it's not a new grant, it's something that happens every year, and we would like for that to be approved, something to apply for that.
No new employees, they give us money to help pay salaries.
This is every year.
Every year, yeah.
We also need to approve it, because it came to us after our meeting was over at this point, so.
It does have a tight timeline, and that's the reason that it's coming to us.
You guys, go ahead and.
I'm moved for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this grant for EMA, the amount of $44,827.63. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All say aye, motion carries.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Sign off on that. Okay, Kathy, can you and, and 100 words or less explain this? I mean, I think the sheet you've given us has it all laid out, I would love it if we could vote on this.
So, so I'm going to explain Fund 2501 quickly, and then, because that, and not everybody got this, she's shooting Tony, but.
Okay.
So what happened back, and this is helping Mark do some fund checking, and anyways, statute for Fund 2501 is county user fee fund.
Jeff's going to make you a copy, please quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Jeff's making copies, go ahead. We're just taking a second.
Okay. Anyway, when this fund was created, it was created with the intent for the finances that were collected during somebody's infraction, whatever they had to pay to be in this program, that the funds were to be divided between these eight different buckets, we'll call it. One of the buckets we never used, the other seven we do, but what happened, and the statute says you can create 2501 up to 2599. Well, and this was like three, three auditors ago or something. Anyway, several of these buckets were already created outside this fund with different numbers. Some of them created in this bucket were given unusual names, for instance, it's called Charges for Services, and another one is called Miscellaneous, there's no such thing in the statute. So to make the long story short, we have, if we can take, okay. So, so that's what started the whole thing. So I will go back to, here's one for you, Mark, because I have one. So in looking at this, we changed financial systems in the software, financial software systems in the auditor's office in 2016. So at the end of 2015, I find my note, there was a lump sum of, what do you want to say? We have no means of looking back to see which of those buckets within that fund that they were put into. The assumption is, it's the, basically, four that coming forward that they're still using. So Tony and I had a meeting with the auditor staff, Mike Shipman, because the statute says the prosecutor is able to use these funds, but a lot of these are really not his. Anyway, the determination was at that time to take from 1-1 of 2016 to current and see, you know, we can see the receipts, what percentage of, one was, let's see, we had Charges for Services, jury pay fee, law enforcement fees, and miscellaneous. What percentage of those, if you take that with the lump, which was that email that I sent everybody, for the prior to 15 date, and then figure it for what actually went in after that. And so I made the spreadsheet to do all those calculations, minus the money that has been spent, and the only expenditures out of there in all this time was $62,027.81, and that was by the Indiana State Police and the Richmond Police Department for the law enforcement education fees. So what I'm proposing is, and Mark and I, is some of the things that I'm going to read on this paper that they just gave you, just to get this money out, and we are to use it all, and I had a long conversation with Corey George, he absolutely agrees and makes some suggestions. So that is what I have here. So do you have any questions on that part before I jump to the other part? Okay, so then, that being the case.
I don't know if you said that Ron Cross was involved in this.
Ron, Ron is the one that said, "Remember, this is how you should do it." So that's what I have done. So at this point in time, so set that aside, because within that was the jury pay fee piece. So setting that aside, and two of these buckets, the Charges for Services and the Miscellaneous, when we ultimately look back at the quietuses and things, those were funds that would go to the probation department. And that's actually for juvenile probation informal adjustment fees. So we're going to put both of those all into a fund for Corey. and he will pay himself and Adam McQueen out of that. So the suggestion by Corey was, and we'll start with this one, if we create Fund Twenty-five-oh-four, which is in that range in the statute, and we name it juvenile probation informal adjustment fees, and then within that line, we, that fund, we would create the receiving line of zero-zero-three-oh-nine, charges for services, because that's going to be the one-time receipt. And then on the expenditure side, we would create line one-oh-one-oh-two, which is Corey George, oh, I'm sorry, one-oh-one-oh-two, an employee, and then another employee, one-oh-two-five-six, I have an extra zero on there. I think it's one-oh-two-five-six. I don't know, Kim, can you verify that? I think I just have an extra zero. So that's one, one motion. That we need to, one, create the fund, and two, create these lines within the fund. So if we do that one, then we can move on with the rest. I'm sorry?
I think we can just do the whole pay dollar once after you explain it.
Okay, that's fine with me. So then moving on, in Fund Twenty-five-oh-three, which we created at the last meeting, and it's jury pay fund, if we would, in that fund, create line Twenty-five-oh-three-three-three-zero-one-one, which is per diem pedit jurors, also line that, that fund, three-three-zero-one-zero, per diem jurors, and three-three-three-five-one, jurors' travel, meals, and lodging, and I wish the judges would have stayed, but three-three-three-five-zero, jurors', lodging, meals, and board. This was a suggestion by Corey George because ultimately Twenty-five-oh-three is the fund that we would use to pay all of our jurors. And the thing is, we can't, we can't put like the, the two jury, travel, meals, and lodging because the different courts have to report those separately. So Corey suggested if we put it all in Twenty-five-oh-three, then rather than having it, take it out of the county general budget for court services and Superior Three, it would be here. And then we would put within, and this is my suggestion, we would put in council's budget whatever we would budget for jurors. But also that we have this money from this Twenty-five-oh-one fund. But, but going forward, everything, and to make it easier for bookkeeping when they do a claim and it's a juror, whether, whether it's paying the juror for their time or their travel, meals, whatever, it's the same fund, it's just different lines so that their reporting is easier, rather than who gets first dibs out of this fund. So that's, that's kind of what that suggestion was. Then the next one is to transfer from county general court services budget for twenty-three, whatever the balance is there. And the ladies in the auditor's office tried to check, and for some reason, the system had some kind of a glitch. So what we want to do is move the budget amounts that are left into Twenty-five-oh-three for this year. So then, and that's for the per diem pedit jurors out of, out of one court, and, and also the travel and meals and lodging out of court services. And then the next one is doing the same thing out of Superior Three. So we would want to do both. And then, so it's moving the pay for the jurors, and then it's moving the travel and lodging out of both of those budgets into Twenty-five-oh-three for, for calendar year twenty-twenty-three. So then, moving on down, so then we would transfer from, let's see, I got that one. So transfer from, oh, two, okay, did that one. So when we come to Fund Twenty-five-oh-one, all the calculations and so forth would be, that we would transfer, where number seven, it says zero-zero-three-oh-nine, charges for services, eight thousand two twenty-seven twenty-two, would go into the new fund we're going to create for Corey for probation. And just name it, the fund is juvenile probation and formal adjustment fees, but within that fund, just, just as a receiving number, would be zero-zero-three-oh-nine, charges for services. And then we also, the zero-zero-nine-hundred miscellaneous is the same thing. That twenty-three thousand five fifty-one sixty-five would also transfer into Twenty-five-oh-four-zero-zero-three-oh-nine. And then there's also the jury pay, zero-zero-four-eight-six, of two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand nine fifty-nine eighty would go into Fund Twenty-five-oh-three, zero-zero-four-eight-six, which is the jury pay fee. So that would be quite a big chunk to be putting in there, which would be good because the jurors' fees, I believe, doubled with this last legislative session. I think it started right first. So that, that's all of that. Plus, on the right-hand side, which has nothing to do with all of this issue, is forty-nine-oh-two, which is the four-D court, is in the red. And we talked about this at the last meeting. So it's in the red, one-hundred-and-fourteen thousand nine fifty-two twenty-six. And I was just conferring with Mark, and it looks like that we should be able to take that out of, I think there'll be enough out of the one-time money because on Steve's note, there was one-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand eight oh-five left. So if we take it out of that, if we can take it out of that.
Now, I signed the claim, we decided last month that we would go ahead and pay the sixty thousand dollars from our budget this year, so is that number including that?
Did you move the sixty thousand? He has not moved the sixty thousand yet.
Well, I already did the claim for it. Last, at our last meeting.
You did, didn't you?
Yeah.
So I think it did, I think it did go because this was like one-hundred-and-seventy-something.
Okay, so the sixty's off of this one, right?
So if we could pay that out of the one-time money, there's enough there. And then the other one is Fund Twelve-oh-nine, which is victim assistance coordinator, or BOKA. That's in the red, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand seven eighty-three forty-six. We've also talked about this one prior to. And if we could pay that one out of the contingency, then there would be enough, enough left to take care of that, I believe. Because contingency has.
Three hundred and, I have a.
We asked for that one, go, and they said.
Three-oh-six-five-twenty-five.
Right.
So we would have enough if we pay those two out of there. And then once those are taken out of the red, then they should be good going forward.
I thought that, what, what, I'm trying to think what we talked about earlier, taking out of council contingency, and I asked if anybody knew the balance, and they said no.
Well, Mark just went.
How about a look?
You went and looked, okay, good.
It's three-oh-six and some changes.
Five-twenty-five something. Where your little sticky note went.
Doesn't matter.
We're just going to keep running really short.
I know. Three-oh-six-five-twenty-four and fifty cents.
So Kathy, everything on the left side of this sheet is transferring money that has been collected and deposited.
For the most part, it's moving it around, or it's already in the budget, like with the courts, the jury pays, some of that is fixing that for ease of bookkeeping for the courts and us.
The exception to that is your item number three, which is a transfer in the twenty-three budget. That is.
That is moving the money from twenty-three's budget into Twenty-five-oh-three. So it's not additional money, it's just moving it in.
And it's something that in twenty-twenty-four, we would also.
Yes, so in, in twenty-twenty-four, and I can't remember, Tony, it might, it may have been late in the day, that that money for the juror, jurors are, is still, and the travel on that is still in the budget. But as Mark had said, leave it there and we can change it the first of the year. But going forward, if we would put a line in council's budget, jury pay for whatever, and then move it like every January first would be a whole lot easier. But at this point, if we can do it for twenty-four, that would be good.
Now, I might say, that when you transfer, what is it, six-hundred-and-seven thousand total?
For what?
In that, that fund.
That Twenty-five-oh-one?
Yeah.
Is.
Five-seventy-one.
It's three, it looks like it's three-twenty-six.
Okay. The amount of money they get in twenty-four is not going to be that amount of money.
No, this is, this is the balance of Twenty-five-oh-one. So what are you talking about?
Wrong one.
Okay. I think he was talking about the balance for the jury pay fund and that. So what's, what's in the, the budget for that is fine, and then in January, we can come back and say, we want to move that. No, no.
Which one had that?
Twenty-five-oh-one has the six-hundred-and-some thousand. But, but we're moving this, but it, it's, one of, one of the buckets is the jury pay fee.
But when you move that, six-seventy-five, you're not going to get six-seventy-five in twenty-four, twenty, doesn't, down the road.
Right, we know that, we know that, yes. It's just spending lots of.
The amount of money you get in that's a.
Right, that's, and the only thing that will, going forward, be spent out of that bucket still is the law enforcement. They're putting money in that number, spending it out, leave that one, do what's thing is good, we'll have the others all out.
Extremely small compared to what.
Well, it's three-hundred-and-some thousand will be left there.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so.
The point I'm trying to make is the income to that fund.
Right.
Will not be the same.
Right.
Every year.
Yeah.
So Kathy, then if we approve these, creation of these numbers and the transfers as you've presented on the sheet, will this clear up those funds in the red that you've been working on for the last.
Yes, yes.
This is the end.
And it puts them back in the black or at zero, but we have worked on to make sure that doesn't happen again. We moved employees out of the one and the BOKA, the BOKA grant. So the, the BOKA one, which is the victim's assistance. So Amy, starting, well, actually, starting October first was the new year. That grant runs October first through September thirtieth. And so we're on year two of that, but when Amy is in payroll is going to watch, and when that money is gone, it's only twenty-seven thousand, she will then revert her to the county general fund, and that didn't happen prior to. And also, that grant does not pay benefits, and that wasn't, we didn't do it correctly. I'll just leave it that way. And so part of the problem about, and if we refresh our memory, is that's a federal grant, and they will reimburse us eighty percent by our coordinator. However.
Can they change?
They tell us how much the quarter, they give us a number for the salary, not, not what we actually pay. So their number's like thirty-three thousand, and she makes, I don't remember, I'm going to say upwards of fifty thousand. So there was the big disconnect, and we just weren't catching that.
Have you filled out all of the forms required at the auditor's office for all of these creations?
I have it all right here.
So, here's my deal.
I think we have to do the left side.
The left side of the page, yes, that's where I was thinking.
So I'll make a motion.
One through eight.
To approve the creation and transfers items one through eight as presented by Kathy and explained by Kathy in this project that she's been working on.
Second.
Any other questions? Clear as mud? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Thanks, Kathy.
I will sign all those papers for you. Now, the next thing, we have, we need to take these one at a time because
Okay.
the transfer forty-nine-oh-two, four-D court, where's it going to?
It's going, it would go from the, from one-time money into forty-nine-oh-two, which is in the hole, or in the red, one-hundred-and-fourteen thousand nine fifty-two twenty-six.
But if sixty, you come off of that.
No, it already did. It was one-hundred-and-seventy-four, so, yeah, the sixty.
The balance of one-time money was the one-fifty-one?
Oh, and plus fifty-five thousand.
Steve's sheet is what I was getting, where I got that from.
So do I have a motion to transfer?
Second.
Motion by Tony, second by Max, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. And then to make the BOKA victim assistant account flush, where we'll have to take from contingency, council contingency, to Twelve-oh-nine, two-fourty-seven, seven-eighty-three, forty-six.
Salute. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Do you feel like celebrating? I do. She's got to be happy about that.
Thank you, one and all.
Thank you for all your work on that. Thank you, honestly, you and Tony and, and the mom and everybody who's been involved and all that.
This is simple, right?
Let's do that again. Next, no. Everybody, everyone, we're talking about that again. Next, we have our salary ordinance.
I'm going to hand you both the salary ordinance and the budget sometime, so I don't have to make two trips.
We have a salary ordinance in front of us, but.
Do you already have it?
I, that's what I need to know. How confident are you that we can pass?
I was just going to look at something back in twenty-twenty-three that I identified an hour before this meeting. It's not a really big deal, but, so am I a hundred percent? No, because I, again, it's not a big deal, but I haven't had time to look at it.
Yeah.
And it was with the court employees.
Yes.
I, I just feel like we need to double-check. One thing was Irwin's report, there was confusion on annual hours worked. I know we go hourly, but we, I think we need to take another look at that real quick because I don't want it wrong. Otherwise, I'm good with everything, but I just identified that an hour before the meeting.
Yeah, and I think we need to look at that so we don't, because if we pass this, we're just going to have to amend it.
Yes, yeah.
So it's probably inevitable, we're going to have to have another call-up meeting next week.
The salary ordinance does not have to be adopted by November the first.
No, no, it doesn't. We, we're fine on that one, we can do it at our next meeting.
Have you already?
Okay.
But I'm, I'm pretty sure, I, I don't know about adopting a budget tonight.
So we're not, we'll wait on the salary?
We'll wait on the salary ordinance. Until Kim does her.
I just want to do one more check here.
And that's good, and it's like Jeff says, it doesn't have a drop-dead date of the first or anything, so. We will make sure.
But I also understood there was another, there's some other.
There was, well, that was in the budget, I think, it wasn't in the salary ordinance.
Well, the Texas salary was, none from the title.
Well, the salary ordinance was right.
There's several things we need to make sure.
Yeah. So. Are we passing out the budget? Oh, I don't know. What do you have, Mark?
What's the, what's the budget?
So let's give us the budget.
This is what they gave us. This is, this is our printout.
And I'm just going to, I'll sign the bottom of some of these, but if you'll just go ahead and.
This is what they.
Education, I'm going to just enter the gateway.
Okay.
This is, I'm pretty sure. Not submitted.
You want to get that clarified by?
Debbie, has this been entered into gateway but, but not submitted, correct?
No, it's been submitted.
It's gone.
No, it's submitted, and right here is where you guys have to sign, you have to ask your work.
You're going to be asked.
I thought it was in and not submitted until we adopted it and then.
I had to be eighteen to put it in, and we did.
No, you didn't. We have till, we have till the first of, to put it in.
It's not even an approved budget.
We haven't approved it yet, there's no way you can submit it. We did.
Let's see what you printed off, is, is that it?
That's it. This is what we, we. I talked to Max, and I talked to Ms. Leisure about this before we did it.
No, you did not.
Okay.
You didn't ask if you could go ahead and submit it before we approved it.
That's right.
No way. Because I would have said no.
Let me, let me see that.
That is what we submitted to gateway, that we need a signature on of each council member.
We have, we haven't even seen the final numbers, like.
It was done because of the requirement that's set on me by CGIF or whatever that.
DLGF says we have drop-dead date till November first, and then you have five days after that to submit. Because I talked to Wayne Hudson. And he said. And he said, once we adopt the budget, then you have five days to put it in.
Wayne Hudson worked with us to do this, showed us what to do.
This is not a stand-up, anyway, I don't.
I do.
I.
No.
I still kind of think, and I could be wrong, but I, because this is not filled out.
It says, I looked on Gateway, it says nothing's been submitted.
I, I think it's there, but you haven't actually did the submit because you didn't have this filled out and you gotta have that before. I think, I think we're talking different terms.
We, we worked with Wayne Hudson for quite a while the other day and he's the one that got us to this point where we do a check and we print this out. And then we need to get your signatures, but we were under the impression this was like it.
But if we looked on Gateway and it's not there, then it's, it's, is that what you said?
I don't know, we just, we, we did what Wayne told us to do.
Yeah, I looked at Gateway and it doesn't show anything.
I get it, but what, what I think is that, that it's all in there, but the actual adopted, we've adopted it and we're good, hasn't been hit or clicked or whatever. I could be wrong, but I'm guessing, because if you don't see it, it's not there.
I mean, on Gateway, it says, on the budget submission log, it says, you know.
Yeah, so I think once we have the meeting and adopt it and we fill this out, then they go back and they do something else. He got you to the point because you would've told him, we've not adopted it yet, right?
I hope so.
Do you have a copy of the budget that I'm, that, that I'm asking you to pass at some point?
Do we have the final thing that you?
This is, this is what I have put into Gateway and I printed out.
Go ahead. And you have a copy of the sal, what do I do with it? You have a copy of the salary ordinance that's being proposed?
Yeah, we have that.
I've got more copies here if you don't have.
No, Kim, we'll take copies, yeah, 'cause Kim gave me the original to sign.
But the top one is what you wanted to print this sign, you have to take the top one off.
I got it out, I think I pulled it out.
You have your first four there.
We're gonna figure out why this didn't show on Gateway.
Uh, salary ordinance.
So what are you?
This is your, um, that you gave me, yeah, hang on to that.
Okay. Is there, are there any questions about elected officials and why we have the amount of money that's in the budget?
We understand what, why the raise was what it was, 'cause we talked to HR about that.
But we acted on that, not knowing.
Not without the right information for sure, not the right understanding of what was going on, but several years ago, they were, elected officials were put in the same category as.
Exact ones.
Exact ones, yeah, so if we don't do that, we would have higher salaries for department heads than elected officials, so it's.
Well, the gap.
The gap would get closer, well, some can be the same or more, so, yeah, we have to, we have to do that, I guess. And we had originally said we, that elected officials were only getting the two percent. But we, I, I didn't know they were all lumped in together.
Okay. Until the question came up yesterday.
Like, why, yeah, why is it so much?
So, and I, and I think we need to know, with, with these put in, how does that compare to last year's budget? Plus the new money? And before we can pass anything?
Everything that is on that, that was just handed out, should match the spreadsheets I emailed you yesterday. By, by line I know.
What, what is last year's budget?
Well, that was on your spreadsheet. All I, the spreadsheets I sent yesterday was exactly what you had before, the only thing I did was I went in and updated the salaries to the twenty-four salary ordinance.
And have, have you guys, uh, like, double checked all the figures? Have you had another person, like, who's got it?
Simona, Simona would read them and I would put them in, so we basically had, yeah.
And then did you match something with the salary ordinance to make sure the total was the same?
We didn't.
We were not able to do that because we were not given information for us to be able to do it our own.
We didn't have a salary.
They had to basically just give us what the salary was.
Right, but I mean, when they did give it to you, did, did, and I don't know if this is even the right question.
We made it different.
At the bottom of the salary ordinance, is there a grand total?
No.
There's subtotals for each fund that we could go through, possibly do that, but I think, it's been a brief look at this and I guess I would recommend that at least probably the team that put the salary ordinance together, which is Amy, Kim, and Pam, take a look at what's in Gateway and just do a double check, 'cause we can't have this wrong, and I'm not saying it's wrong, but I think
It's good to have.
this deserves a double check on these numbers and we need a little time to do that again, 'cause we're way behind on our work, but I think it needs a double check.
As Simona and I put it in, per category, we looked at that total and compared it to your total. But we wound up finding a lot of issues, questions that we met for an hour and forty minutes with the HR team that, that created it to clarify stuff and cause some errors. And so, once that was done, it was like there was a lot of corrections that needed to be made and at that point, I'm hoping we were okay. But prior to that, we were double checking every single category with them.
So I think, just at a glance at things, what we found, it's very small, but it just, I think, just it, uh, calls for a second look at this. Had a chance to look at Gateway report and just at a quick glance, there's a salary where there's a typo in it on Gateway.
Is that what she brought your, his attention and I went and talked to Amy and she says it's fine?
It's in the plan, commit, plan commission.
Yeah, it's fine, according to what Amy said.
It's fine, it matches.
It doesn't match in these two documents, it's a ten dollar difference. In between the budget that was put in Gateway and the salary ordinance we were provided. One zero nine zero six, which.
One zero nine zero six, one zero nine zero six, Amy, yeah, it's forty-five three thirty-one, one point seven one and forty-five three thirty-four.
I think in the Gateway, it was forty-five three forty-four.
Forty-five three thirty-four.
I thought you said it was one gate, you.
This, this is what we verified with Amy before we came in here.
Right.
Here and here. Now, Gateway will not accept.
Round the ball.
Round, so.
Change.
We rounded everything up, because I know you have to be higher than what actually is paid, so that's how we did that.
So is that where my, that's probably ten dollars off, you're rounding everything off?
We have to round everything, so, yeah, that it has to be solid numbers. So, yeah, from that perspective, you may not match a hundred percent on the grand total, but it's because Gateway will not.
But they're saying on this, on that issue.
Gateway will not accept digits.
On that one.
Percent.
They said it's ten dollars off of what this is.
Forty-five three three four, four five three three three.
Right, the dollar.
And seven one, which is, which is rounded up to three three four, so I don't see where.
I don't see an error.
I mean, one of the things that we were waiting for is what is the salary, once you put them in here? How's that compared to last year and our new money? And we were going to reduce the one-time expenditures, but the one-time expenditures haven't been reduced.
No, we have to use this one.
And I know he doesn't want us to do that.
We were told to use that, use that column. Yeah, because rounding that will make a difference. This is, this is the column we have to use, this one, not that one.
Yeah.
We have to use this column.
In any situation, it's always good to have more than one set of eyes and checks and balances on everything before we adopt it as the budget, so most of the good thing we do on here.
Where do we sit then with the budgets in regard to the salary schedule? Are you gonna have a meeting to, to adjust these?
We're gonna have to have a meeting to actually adopt a budget because, so, are you telling, you're telling me that you've submitted this all and it can't be changed in the way?
We did whatever Wayne Hudson told us to do.
Whatever Wayne said and we will check with them all.
And he is unclear.
Wayne did not say, he did not tell me that anything has been done by the eighteenth.
The eighteenth is because of those dates that were set originally.
But that's not.
And we are told that it had to be tonight or you have to do a, is it an ordinance to, to?
Yeah, just an extension or something.
To extend it one time, is what Anna from DLGF told us last Friday.
Wayne told me on Monday that, once we adopt the budget, you have five days to submit it on Gateway and that the last drop dead date was November first and then you have five days, or we have to revert to the twenty-three budget. That's what he told me on Monday.
Five days after November first?
Yeah, that, yeah, November first is the last day we can adopt it and then you have five days after we adopt it to get it in Gateway.
We talked to Anna there, because Wayne was on vacation last week and she gave us the impression it has to be adopted tonight or you have to do an ordinance in order to create another meeting.
No. You have to advertise a special, you could actually, your, your next meeting.
You can pass.
Yeah, there's, no, we can.
At the end of this meeting.
We can recess this meeting and continue it next week, we don't have to end this meeting tonight.
As long.
We're out of the office.
Yeah, we're gone.
We're at conference this evening.
Well. I, I, I don't know why there's a conference, though, week budgets are due, but.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Listen, you can pass at the end of this meeting.
They're gone three days.
Don't close your meeting.
That's what I just said.
And have a continuation of the meeting till some point.
So is it one that HR needs to verify?
No, it doesn't, I have anything to do with the salary ordinance.
They're not, they're not looking at something in the salary ordinance?
Well, they are, but.
Okay.
I, I mean, I think all of us have the consensus that we just want to go through and make sure what we're, 'cause we're signing our names to this just like you are, and just another set of eyes and, and a check and balance.
But I'm just saying, that's, that's one thing and then just continue the meeting till whenever and then see what actually is Gateway, whether it's submitted, not submitted, or whatever.
I mean, just because they're out of the office, out of conference, what days are you on, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday?
Wednesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon maybe, but all through Friday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Well, we can have, we can have a, a, no, we can't, I started saying we can have a meeting. I mean, I guess we could have a meeting on Tuesday morning and then that, you have the thirtieth and the thirty-first
And you can get this done.
and the first to get it submitted. And then, well, act, well, no, five, if we have our meeting on, we could have our meeting on the first, or the thirtieth. One, two, three, four, and you'd have till that next Friday to get it into Gateway.
So if you have it on the thirtieth, that is.
It's a Monday, they're back.
You could extend for ten days, so is that, more than ten days from now?
You mean to extend this meeting, right?
No, the twenty-eighth is the.
Yeah, so you couldn't, you couldn't do the thirtieth, but you could do the first, which is Wednesday.
Okay. We could do the twenty.
Or you could call a special meeting, how much, how much advertising, uh, time do you need to have a special?
Just for a special meeting?
I believe it's forty-eight hours.
It's forty-eight hours, but if we suspend, do we have to advertise?
No, you do not have to advertise for ten days.
Well, but you could only suspend for ten days.
I know, but if we suspend till the twenty-seventh on Friday morning, we could. I can't believe that.
She's gone, okay, don't go, yeah, fine.
How about Friday this week?
Don't get it done, don't get it done.
Can we not figure it out, or is, I know, but do we have that much to check on that we couldn't do it in two days? I mean, I don't know if everybody's available, but just a suggestion.
Yeah.
My staff will be available Saturday if you wanna do it. This Saturday.
We're not gonna do Saturday.
Well.
I mean, people have, already have plans and things going on.
It, it would appear that our budget is.
Do it on the first, at our meeting.
A million five.
They got stuff for going on, so she will go.
And change over what it was last year.
Under.
Over what we left here, I'm saying.
Okay.
When we left here two weeks ago, it's a million and a half.
Yeah, it's a million and a half over that we had talked about at one time, point three million to one point five, but last I checked, Wayne Hudson was on the council member and had a vote, I guess.
Yeah.
That's correct.
If you change the elected officials' salaries.
We're not doing that.
Okay, well, I'm just asking, because if you do.
No, we already said, no, that one's okay.
Okay.
Where's our one-time money in here? What puts it on? Yeah, I'm just looking at what they put in there.
I'll see you in the morning, late. And if you're here early, we'll take you back home. And if we can't get it done, we're gonna get it done.
Yeah, see, our one-time money's still showing up, three million. And we talked, we wanted to reduce that to one point five and it's still three million in here.
Well, we wanted to see.
We wanted to see what the raise is and go, yeah, and we were gonna decide that tonight. That was the discussion at our last meeting.
And of that, one and a half million that it's raised, since two weeks ago, probably all of that or almost all of it is salary.
Is gonna have to, yeah.
You ready to go home?
That, that's kind of the figure we thought, but I don't like doing this where we are not having solid.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we should do this tonight.
So the question then is when?
I mean, we can do it at our meeting on the first, but everything has to be in place by then.
Yeah, that's.
It's, that's the last drop dead day that we can adopt it.
Well, it's a date.
Well, I would guess that if it's any solace, if you do go ahead and approve it on the first, that one point five million, you have some room, play with that, reduce it more if you need to increase it like above there, if you, if you have room to do that, so, uh, that, that is your wiggle room, if you will, to make adjustments. And again, the salary ordinance, which is not due at any particular time, just soon enough so the payroll can get all the information in for the, for next year's payroll.
Probably definitely in December.
It, it can be, and so
Yeah.
that's what actually is your control. If you need to make some, some minor adjustments to the budget later on, to your transfers or what have you, you can do that. Yeah, and, and no matter what number you end up, I'm confident that it will be approved by the LGF because we have some reserves that will, will cover that.
Change carries back.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's, it's, um, you've got some flexibility is what I'm trying to say. But it makes sense to me that you wait until the first so that, uh, so you have time to check in and feel comfortable with it.
Are you comfortable with wait until the first?
Yeah.
You guys? Are you comfortable with wait until the first to actually adopt it? And then they have five days after that?
It's already then.
Yeah, well, so it's it, so just
Whatever, whatever tweaks you like making in the game.
Yeah. So, that's the decision. We will be adopting the budget and we will work diligently between now and then to make sure it's what we want before we are all ready to sign it. Okay? Anything else? Has anybody got any else? We did not approve the minutes for tonight yet. So, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from September twentieth workshop?
Owe.
Motion and a, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any counsel?
Chair or not?
Motion to approve the minutes. For the discussion, if not, all in favor, seven, five, seven, nine.
Aye.
Motion, care.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're out.